Wonderful. We'll call this meeting of the Freeman School Board to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We'll call?
Yes.
And we're absent.
Next on the agenda, the approval of the agenda will require a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Sure, yeah, all the changes are highlighted in yellow. It looks worse than it actually is. We just shifted in a handful of new business items, two unfinished business that occurs in the year. The architects and engineers that are here presenting today, that we could let them go first and hear our decision and then they can go about their business and get back to their families. And then a couple other requests for an addition of an executive session and then we added under 14 some additional tech equipment. It's pretty hefty size of handout of surplus items. So we continue to clean out closets and all that good stuff and push that stuff down the road. So no sense in hanging on to it if we haven't used it for many years. I think that's it.
All right. With that, I will require a motion to approve the amended agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by David. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Katie. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Conflict of Interest Disclosures. I've received none.
None.
Public input?
Also none.
Consent agenda. Will require a motion to approve the following. The minutes of the regularly scheduled school board meeting of July 9th, 2025. Conditions of employment of Michelle Pepper as driver's education instructor for the 2025-2026 school year. Conditions of employment for Ryan Sorensen as assistant football coach for the 2025-2026 school year. Conditions of employment for Joyce Hora as co-prom advisor for the 2025-2026 school year. Conditions of employment for Miranda Langley as food service professional. Point three FTE for the 2025-2026 school year. The resignation of Peggy Walner, paraprofessional, and we thank her for her service. And the amended conditions of employment for Larry Whip to include payout of unused sick leave, financial report, and claims. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Katie. Do I have a second? Second by Chris. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. School Board will look at your presentation from Sayre Associates Architecture Incorporated. Thank you for coming. As a reminder, we'll have up to 20 minutes for your presentation and then 15 minutes for Q and A and I'll be the timekeeper for that. So feel free to get started.
20 minutes is up as well or let me know when the 20 minutes?
Oh, yeah, I know. I'll let you know. I'll give you like a five minute warning. I'm not shy.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this evening and just to present our qualifications to be your design firm for your athletic complex improvements that you're considering and just to discuss a little bit more about your project as well as as we get a little bit further into the presentation. My name is Paul Korn. I'm a civil engineer with Sayre Associates. With me is Steve Jastrum, architect with Architecture Incorporated, and then Branson Tolliver, one of our engineers on staff at Sayre Associates. Just in addition to being a civil engineer, I'm also an alumni of Freeman High School. Graduated 1987, so that's a long time ago if anyone's doing the math. So I think we're coming up on 40 years. And so, and so as a little kid, I just have a lot of fond memories of that facility, playing pickup games with neighborhood kids and then eventually playing on the field as well as a high schooler. And we had a few rough years, but we did have a pretty good year when I was a senior and so a lot of good memories. And so it's a, it's a privilege as an alumni of Freeman High School to stand before you now as you consider utilizing us for the design services. So with that, I'm going to start with just a few, just an overview of our firm so you get to know us a little bit better. Sayre Associates is a firm of 24 people in Sioux Falls and we, we serve basically about 100 mile radius of Sioux Falls. And so we've got 13 engineers, three land surveyors, and then some survey technicians and CAD technicians. But we do a lot of land development, site development, transportation projects, industrial parks. But through those, in addition to all that, we've also had the privilege to be involved with a lot of school projects, teaming up with Arc Inc. Most of those school projects as well as a lot of athletic complexes. And so with that, I guess I'll let Steve kind of introduce himself in Arc Inc.
Yeah, and again, Steve Jastrum, partner at Architecture Incorporated. Been very privileged to, to work with the firm for 45 years and I just can't imagine doing anything different. And I just kind of specialize in K to 12 schools. We also do higher education, a lot of work for USD and SDSU. But K to 12 schools and all of the parts that go with that are just my specialty that I love, love to do. We're a firm, again, we're architects and interior designers. We're a staff of 28, offices in Sioux Falls and Rapid City. But we do team up almost exclusively with Sayre Associates here. We do any civil work required.
Since you guys are seeking a design firm for your athletic complex, we just wanted to highlight our qualifications. So as Steve said, we've worked with Arc Inc. on most of these projects, but here's just a list of the projects we've worked on in the last 20 years. I think I counted, there's 11 track projects and about 10 artificial turf projects. So that's doing a track project about every other year. Those projects range from six lane track for the Howard School District to Division One track for USD. And so we just have a wealth of experience we've gained through those projects and we've have very satisfied clients from those projects and we're, we want to highlight that and, and excited to apply that to the Freeman project as well.
And about every one of those with the artificial turf and even some of the other ones too, but we've done the concessions and restrooms and with them. And, and the other thing that you'll be hearing more from me talking about is what's unique about every community is your entrance feature. You know, you want to outsmart the visiting team before they even walk in the gate. Anyway, we've been privileged to work with Paul Korn on that one.
Just to highlight a few projects. So one that we worked with Arc Inc. on was the Jefferson High School project. And so in addition to the new high school building and the parking and the access roads, it's also a pretty impressive athletic complex with an eight lane new track, artificial turf field. They have a tennis team, so we had eight tennis courts that were part of that complex as well as three natural turf practice fields. So they have a lot of surface area that they can, for their athletes to utilize. Shortly after we completed this project, Jefferson High School is the first school in Sioux Falls to have turf. So then the other schools need a turf. So we did a turf conversion project for the other schools. So Lincoln, Roosevelt, and Washington all got artificial turf shortly after this project. And so those projects were a little bit unique because we left the track in place and removed the natural turf and constructed artificial turf within those. Another project I'd like to highlight is this is one of the first major projects we did and this was for the city, or for the Harrisburg School District. And this is their, their, there's their high school in Harrisburg. Really nice complex. Architecture Incorporated was the architect on that. And this was the turf project that we were, first artificial turf project that we were involved with. And again, a new eight lane track and artificial turf surfacing. After this project, we've since done four track and field projects for the Harrisburg School District at their three middle schools and at their new freshman academy.
It's, it's, I still refer to this as the new Harrisburg High School, but it was about 15 years ago. Well, we've already started there, another new one. So I have to call this one the old one anymore.
And you see the entrance feature there that's?
Yeah, and the key thing I wanted to kind of talk, start sharing with you is that what can make every school district a little different, unique, is the entrance. You know, you're going to have a football field, you're 300 yards long. Okay, and you got seating, great. But some little unique things you can do to it to help identify Freeman Flyers. We can do different things with an entrance feature. If you, it all depends on what all you want to do. Obviously, you need a ticket booth somewhere. Well, it's a great opportunity to incorporate something into that. Here's what we did at Harrisburg. They wanted something a little unique. We've got some glass up high, so at night this shines at night. And it's kind of a neat feature to help give you a good, good feeling when you, when you come to the games.
One of the things that could be considered with an entrance feature, this kind of struck me when I went, made one of my site visits down here is, you know, you come into the gymnasium and you see the trophy cases. It highlights all the successes of the, of the programs through the years. But is there, what is highlighting the success out at the football field and is there a way to do that as part of an entrance feature to say, hey, you know, you know, notify those, those opposing teams that are coming in that's like, hey, there's a storied success in Freeman and it's one way to highlight that, so. Just recently, again, teamed with Architecture Incorporated, we completed a softball complex for the Harrisburg School District. It's one main competition softball field and then four youth baseball fields. And the unique thing about the softball field is it's artificial turf just on the infield. So wherever you have the, the agri lime aggregate infield or infield, that's where the turf is and then the outfield is natural grass. And so it's just completed and so they haven't played a game on it, but.
They've been practicing.
Yeah, they've been practicing on it, so.
But one thing I was going to highlight too is they were fortunate enough to have Shields be a major sponsor for them. And so then they, and the community said, well, you know, we got to do a nice, not only a nice entrance feature to the complex, but acknowledge and thank Shields. So that's why we designed the entrance feature that you can, you can see there on the left side. But then also like what Paul Korn was saying, back behind it, we have like their Hall of Fame for their softball complex. They haven't built these yet. We've built the concrete and the plaza is ready. But again, when people come in, acknowledge the Hall of Fame athletes who've been here and have performed here. And I think it's a nice way to display it, just like you do on the interior on the gym.
And then lastly, just touch on the USD track and soccer field. You know, obviously a Division One competition complex and so a little bit different layer of requirements and technical challenges and things like that. But again, it was just a very neat project to be a part of. I don't know if anybody's been to a track meet there, but one of the unique things about this project is the arrangement of the grandstand relative to the track. The grandstand, as you see over here, is about 50 feet off the track because they wanted to feature pole vault and long jump. Obviously, pole vault is a very prominent USD. They've had some Olympic pro, Olympic pole vaulters and so they wanted to feature that. And so I kind of scratched my head when they wanted to do that, but I did go to a track meet there and it was a pretty cool perspective to see all that laid out in front of you. And then as well as an artificial turf soccer field up to this side of the track complex for their, for the girls soccer team. So again, just a very neat project to be a part of.
We were selected out, we have an office system in Sioux Falls and Rapid City, as I mentioned, in Rapid City. We were selected to Post 22 Baseball Stadium. And those of you who are no Legion baseball, Post 22 Rapid City is the real McCoy. Boy, that community is behind them. And we, they really wanted us to help design as part of redoing the stadium and the seating, but to create the Hall of Fame. This one is for them a little bigger, a little fancier because they had funding to do it. But you can do things simple. I just wanted to show you, we can do a wide range of things if you want to so choose to do something like that or at least master plan for it. I think that would be nice for you in the future. Go ahead. We've done all the work at Brandon Valley School District for about 30 years and one of them is a new entrance feature to their athletic field. And again, this is part of the ticket booth, the entrance to make a statement there. And of course, what goes with it was all new concessions and restrooms as well at Brandon Valley.
So in addition to our athletic complex experience, we just wanted to highlight some of the projects we've also done within the city of Freeman. And so if, in case you weren't aware, we were the engineers for the Main Street Reconstruction Project. And so as a Freeman native, that was a very, it was just a privilege to be, to be able to do that for my hometown and I think the result turned out very well. And just, just a good project for the city of Freeman. And Arc Inc. as well has had some extensive history in Freeman as well.
Yeah, we've redid the library a few years back. We've done a lot of work actually with Randy Kerner, Kerner Construction through the years. And we've done a lot of, some work with the Freeman Academy as well. We'll show you in a minute. But the, another one here, the next slide is the Wall Street Village. I was in charge and what a wonderful project for a community of Freeman and I'm so glad to hear that it's doing so well. And we were involved, the architects for that. And then also I just want to show you a sketch of the Arboretum at Freeman Academy, another project that we've done in Freeman and we have, we have a good presence here in Freeman. And, and again, we've worked extensively with Randy Kerner. They always feel free to chat with him about us if you would so like to.
So that's, so I just wanted to kind of go over the, the team that you would be hiring if you select Sayre Associates and Architecture Incorporated. Sayre Associates would be the lead on the project. We'd be the lead firm. I would be the main point of contact as the project manager. Branson Tolliver is, would be one of the designing peers helping through the project. And then Arc Inc. would be a sub to Sayre Associates and we would have a contract between us. And Steve Jastrum would be the lead on that along with Andrew Etrum and.
And Ally. And Ally. All three of us will be involved with the project from beginning to end.
But this team obviously works under the school district, so the school district's at the head of that team basically. And so we want to make sure that, that, you know, you guys know we're working for you and we're here to, to understand your needs for your athletic complex and to, to make that a reality. And so ultimately, you guys are at the, the head of that team and, and we're going to be interacting with you to, to understand your needs and, and desires and, and to deliver a project that's good for the school now and into the future.
And other clients have always told us they really appreciate that when they know the one point of contact that you can call from the beginning all the way to the one year review. We always do a review once, one year after the project's done. You call Paul. And if it's something for me, he lets me know about it right away.
No question.
But yeah, that one point of contact, I think is a great continuity.
So since the initial phase of services would be for SD services or what's called schematic design services, our scope that we're proposing is to begin with a topographic survey and we send our surveyors out there and get a good base map of your existing complex. And that base map basically serves at the foundation of plans going forward, basically. So that gives us the locations of all your, your amenities, the elevations, utility locations and things like that. And so having a good survey is very critical to, to having a good schematic design. Once we have that survey completed, we would then have stakeholder meetings. I assume there would be a committee by the school district, whether that's made up of school board members, some of your, your athletic staff, coaches, five minutes ago. Okay, thanks. And so through those schematic designs, we would get better understanding of your wants and desires, what has worked well, what doesn't work well. And we would utilize that to develop schematic designs. And we see there being an initial kickoff meeting and then a 50% schematic design meeting, a 90% schematic design meeting. And then finally, the 100% meeting, or 100% plan would be presented to the school board along with the cost estimate and 3D renderings.
Included in this first phase is we'll be doing 3D exterior sketches, similar to what some of the ones we showed you earlier. Like a good example was the Harrisburg softball complex. 3D exterior sketches are great for the community and for you and for everyone. And that's included in our service.
So obviously, here's just an overview of, of your complex and kind of what we understand the scope to be. Replacing the existing track, the existing track was built in 99, so you've gotten 26, 27 years out of it, so it's pretty good life, but it's at the end of its life and it's time to be reconstructed. With that, there'd be an artificial turf bid alternate option. And so we've laid in, you know, an artificial turf image in here as well as then highlighting new 500 seat bleachers and press box area. And then we've kind of positioned the concessions building bathroom between the, the grandstand and the entrance and we feel that that provides good flow from, you know, for the visiting section as well as the home fans to utilize and to, there's also, you know, plaza here that can be utilized for eating, picnic tables, things like that. And so.
Plazas are really nice to have and people use them all the time, of course, while you're, yes, it's for near concessions, but you're just socializing. It's a great place. Incorporate that.
And so this is a starting point, but you know, obviously it's, it's a, you know, something that, you know, we need to interact with you guys to get your wants and needs. One thing about the concessions here, it is pretty close to where the original concept plan showed a locker room and restroom facility here. It's also very close to where the sewer line goes out to Albert Street. So there's utilities close by right there, so it works pretty well in that location.
And then depending on where you do your softball complex, you could share those.
Yeah.
The concessions and restrooms with the softball complex.
If you were ever to do a future softball complex somewhere over here, I know one was being considered at one point. Now it's in close proximity to this concession and, and restrooms and so it could serve as a future use for that. So we see a timeline for these services beginning in August. If you were to make a decision tonight, the schematic design and stakeholder meetings would occur from September through November and then final presentation in December. And if the final design and the cost estimate looks acceptable to the school district, we could roll right into design services and we feel that we could have full construction plans and specs completed in two months after the SD phase and have that out for bids in late February or early March and possibly get it under construction then in the 2026 summer. Along that, I would say we are in a very bidding, very positive, advantageous bidding climate right now. Work is slowed down for everybody and so costs are coming down. And so I think this is a very advantageous time to pursue a project like this. Again, our fee structure that we provided in our proposal was a lump sum fee of $42,000. That's comprised $12,000 in survey fees, $16,000 in civil engineering fees, and $14,000 for architectural fees. And so that's how we get to a $42,000 lump sum fee. I would say that is a pretty good level of effort for schematic design services, but I think that level of effort is going to give you the most, the best services and a most accurate cost estimate so you can make a good decision going forward. And, and then we did, we did also provide a fee of 5.75% if you do want to move forward with the construction phase services, so, or the construction drawings and specifications. And so I think that concludes our presentation.
13 seconds left. Pretty good.
What can I say for 12 seconds?
Yeah, we, just in closing, yeah, just thankful for this opportunity and we're just entertaining any questions that you have, so.
Wonderful. Great. At this point, we'll move on to the 15 minute Q and A section. Does anybody want to kick it off? Do you have any like budgetary type questions or items for clarification at all or does it seem pretty straightforward?
That's pretty straightforward.
So you're thinking mid timeline would be February?
We could have plans issued in February and probably, and then opening bids. You know, normally you have a three week advertisement period for a project like this. And so if we had plans available for bidding in February, we'd open up bids in early March and then award it in March and.
Would that fit a timeline that can make sure that, ensure that it happens for next summer?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause then normally there's, get contracts in place within 30 days and contractor would be out here and he could ready, ready to start demolition. You know, obviously we'd have to work with the, the committee and athletic staff to, to figure out, okay, you know, how much are we able to impact the track season, things like that? Or are the things we can do outside the track, like start on the grandstands, you know, and the concessions building, things like that. And so there's quite a bit of prep work that could be done outside of the track if we needed to leave that track in place for a good duration of the period.
Yeah, we, you get started with a construction like April 1st that many of you would know weather wise, but you have your track season. Well, we got to do everything except the track, you know. We can get started with that. Obviously, you get things ordered. It takes a while to get the, the steel, the grandstand seating, for example. So, and yeah, we will have discussions with you about kind of the phasing of this so that you can still have track, but still try to have everything done if possible for that first game in the fall for football. You know, it's, we'll see. I mean, we'll have good discussions on that because it does take a little, the earlier we can start in the spring, the better it is. But that can affect some of the track things, you know. So that's what we'll be talking about.
Are you guys seeing much of a lag as far as lead time with the tariff unrest and anything like that? You mentioned steel. Are you seeing anything in the industry that's lagging because of that?
No, and the steel's getting better, but it just takes, you know, it takes like three, three to four months from a time a contract's awarded to get the grandstand here. It just takes that long to get it. They don't, you know, they're all, I want to say custom made, you know, to your particular deals and, and that's actually pretty fast. But during those three months, you have demolition, footing, foundations, and earthwork and all. So the timing works out pretty good. We haven't seen delays. There used to be a delay for some light fixtures, but that's gotten way better now than it used to be. Yeah, no, we don't have as much delays as we used to.
Yeah, I think we noticed that on the Main Street project, actually. I think our lights were delayed on that Main Street project.
Yeah?
Any other questions?
That's a good one. I wish we had a magic ball to see for sure, but it's getting much better. Much better.
Any other questions? That was really thorough. I really enjoyed it and I think it, I mean, obviously appreciate your time and I think, you know, it does speak Williams that you've been invited back to do multiple projects, so, no, thank you. That was, that was great.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Great. I mean, it'll be up to you. Okay, I worked with her just shortly at Ellen's. Is she still there? I, we like just kind of crossed paths just shortly.
To Greeley a few months ago. Her husband is in residency in Greeley, so they just moved to Greeley. We just went saw him this last week. And your name?
Angelique.
I was very well stocked. Literally a live touch.
This must just be the thing. Never seen these before. I got two.
Thank you.
There was a few stops that I wished to allocate a little more time for.
Oh, yeah, for sure. We were rushed through that too.
But the world classroom did a fantastic job of staying home. I enjoyed it.
That's great.
Stuck out the most. Leather staff was fantastic. There was the one display that we missed that I saw when I was a kid.
Step on that girth, trip on the cord.
She points for that. She told me this morning and I.
You match all?
No, fun fact for this one, this one's special.
Oh, really?
Yes, alright.
And it's still fit. I don't think I could fit in my wedding dress.
I don't get to bust that out very often.
No, not often that I would like to, but.
You just need to go to more weddings.
Feel weird wearing this to a.
Where should we stand so we're not in the way? Does it matter?
Right there's good. If you want to control this, then if I'm over here.
Well, thank you so much for coming. I will just provide a quick reminder. So twenty minute presentation and then up to fifteen minutes for question and answer. I'll be your timekeeper and I promise to let you know when you have five minutes left. And yeah, thank you so much for your time. Looking forward to the presentation.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, well, I guess to start, before we introduce ourselves, here's if you guys go around, just introduce yourselves. And if you do, I'm always curious to know kind of what, what got you interested in being part of the, the school board and that's in your community.
Everyone wants to start. You only have like thirty seconds though.
I'm Mitzi Winia and I am the Junior High School Principal. And this will be my second year here, so.
Katie Yankee, I am the Elementary Principal.
I'm Lee Anderson, Board Chair. I have three children that attend Freeman Public and my husband is a Freeman Public alum.
Cody Spangler, Freeman transplant, two kids in the district.
Chris Seiler, I am a Freeman alum.
Katie Franzen, same, kids.
David Downs, I'd do it for the glory.
T G Superintendent.
Angelie Letcher, Business Manager.
Well, thank you all for having us today and giving us the opportunity to come in here and speak with you all. Start by introducing ourselves. So this morning, we were thrown a little bit of a curveball. Neither of us are Kyle. He was supposed to be here.
Is that an old picture?
But no, he called us this morning and has the flu. So he did not want to come. He's bummed he couldn't be here, but.
He's the guy that makes fun of people for not showing up too. So we, yeah, you know, he's, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, like, like we used to, used to say in my baseball playing days, you gotta sit fastball and react curveball. This is us reacting to a curveball. So he bummed he can't be here. He would be a part of the project, project manager. You can kind of see kind of who he is up here a little bit, but.
And he'll be your main point of contact throughout the process. And then I'm Amanda Thomas. I'm a civil engineer. I've been with ISG for just about ten years. I grew up in southern Minnesota and I'm a big sports fan. I grew up running track and playing soccer, captain of the soccer team. And my dad is still an ultra marathon runner and he says that I'm retired from running. And I think I'm a little bit of disappointment because of that. But, um, sports are just like, have been a part of my life for, since I was a kid. Grew up either on the weekends playing sports or watching Tiger Woods or Randy Moss and Dante Culpepper, so.
My name is Josh Muckenhern. I'm an architect with, with ISG. Architect, father, husband, got a twenty month old at home, which is pretty exciting. Kind of brings a whole new perspective when you're designing school facilities and whatnot, having, having a little one coming up. But also stubborn Minnesota, Minnesota sports fan. I gotta say that with pride because it's always their year and they're always going to be good on paper. And we always know how it's going to end. So, but I'm always to the end, a Minnesota sports fan, for better for worse. So a little bit about ISG, I know you guys all, I assume looked at, saw our proposals. So we want to kind of be brief on some of these upfront things so we can get to your project a little bit more. So just the high level things that we feel are relevant to this project. We are a full service architecture engineering firm. So myself, architect, Amanda, civil engineer. We've got mechanical, electrical, structural, kind of everyone, part of the same team. We've got dedicated sports and recreation experts on our team. So just a few of the stats up here, with since twenty fifteen, we've had fifty plus artificial turf projects. And that's specifically artificial, not including any of the natural grass athletics as well. So it's more than that for those. But five point five million square feet of synthetic turf has been installed and designed that we've done. And then thirty plus track and field projects since twenty fifteen as well.
I think just over a million of that is over in Sanford Sports Complex in Sioux Falls there. Yeah, the, there's five baseball, five softball and eight soccer multi-use fields.
So key personnel, we kind of talked about some of our individuals. So Kyle obviously would be the point of contact, project manager, kind of herding the cats, if you will, with all of our, our team all being under one roof. So that's kind of really the one point of contact for everyone. Amanda and I would still be very intimately involved. Like this is the kind of core team that you'd see the most of. And then the support team that we've got listed there are kind of all the others, kind of working in the background, depending on the phasing, the project, what's required and needed, all the way down to the technology designer, depending what, what might be needed there as well.
So like Josh said, don't want to rehash everything, but wanted to give you kind of the highlight reel of a few projects that are very similar to what you guys are looking at doing. So the, the first one is just across the border in Cambie, Minnesota. This one is so similar to your field. Like they have, I think, just over fifteen hundred residents, very, very similar, even down to the angle of the, the field in that northwest, east or southeast direction. But it used to be a cinder track and then they wanted to keep up with kind of their competition in their section. So ended up going to a synthetic running track and eight lanes, new grandstand, five hundred seats in the grandstand, or in the grandstand. And then synthetic turf was actually an alternate. They ended up, last minute, we, we did plans for both synthetic and natural grass and then had the synthetic as an alternate. And there was a nearby farmer that came in, in the eleventh hour and donated the synthetic turf. So, but we were able to figure out a way to, you know, collaborate between the two plans, whether or not they decided to go with synthetic turf or not. Then the next one, Byron, this one, growing community right on Rochester, Minnesota. That one, they, they just noticed they were doing their long-term planning and noticed that for what they had right now, it was sufficient, but long-term, it wasn't going to suffice for where their projections were in the community. So definitely did upscale this one, but this one was also a new eight lane track with synthetic turf on the inside. And then last but not least, Western Dubuque in Iowa. This one, the reason why I picked this one is because they actually evaluated several different track section types. And the way, based off of what you choose for your track type also affects how you integrate it with the synthetic turf. There's a curb on the inside of the track and the elevation of that, depending on which one you pick. Kids don't have to nerd out with me, but depending on which one you pick also affects how the drainage goes throughout the field. So that one was a fun one, just to nail down what their priorities were and how that fit into the long-term planning. So let's get to yours though. We did, Josh has been intimately involved with them, walking on site. And what I like about this one is the, you already have an eight lane track. You already have the dimensions that you need. You already, a lot of the thing, honestly, looking at the previous plans, you already have a curb on the inside of your track. So if you did want to go to synthetic turf in the future, or if you wanted to do it right away, that's where you would attach your synthetic turf. So that's one of the things that you would do on upfront regardless of if you went natural grass or synthetic turf. The other thing is wherever your bleachers, grandstand lay, or end up, they need to be at least five feet from lane eight. Cause imagine if you're running in lane eight and then you've got this grandstand right here. One, sometimes kids like to stick their hands through. Two, just the, the visual obstruction of running in lane eight and just, it feels constricted. And then if you're too far over to the left, then suddenly you're just fine. So that was a couple of things that we noticed right off the bat. But then also evaluating opportunities for different concession stand options that Josh will go into here in a little bit. And then also looking at how spectator circulation and ADA is getting around the, the complex. Right now, most, there is some spectator seating on the visitor's side, but if you think about how a track needs run, if you have an athlete that's running, you know, one hundred, and then you also have a high jumper, you probably want to go down to this area in the south. So just getting that circulation in there so that you can get around.
Anything else on that? So there are two options for the, the site that we'll run through today and just two, obviously, there's many that we can look at. But that's kind of what the C one and C two are that I'll run through here in just a second. Cover either or not both in this scenario.
As, as we were looking at your facility though, we also wanted to look at the versatility of the space. And if you did end up deciding to go with synthetic turf, there is an option to overlay with a softball line and either having temporary fencing, one, there's an above ground option where you, you, it's a little bit harder to store, but there's no effect to the synthetic turf below. Semi-permanent, that one is, it, you have sleeves that go into the synthetic turf and then there's a little mushroom cap that goes on in, when it's not in use. And then option, the first one that's listed, it would actually be if you decided, hey, I need another alternative for during natural grass. We wouldn't use that option during, if you had synthetic turf, because the stakes actually would void your warranty. So just wanted to show that there is an opportunity if you needed another space for, get more wheels.
So jumping into some of the built structures. So this drawing up here is for a five hundred seat, well, five hundred and five technically, seat, grandstand and press box. It's sized specifically for the, to meet all the ADA requirements and the number of ADA seats. Been in contact with a bleacher supplier manufacturer to help get these drawings to size specifically for the, the seating capacity and whatnot. So not someone just pull out of thin air. You know, it is kind of got some real, realism to it. You can kind of see the section down there, just kind of showing how that would stand with the elevated seat below, press box up above and whatnot. So jumping into some of the other building pieces, again, this is just going to be two options of many that obviously we want to talk through in more detail if we're given the opportunity to work with you all. But this one is just an option. I'm going to call it the, the concession plaza option, where if it is, you know, next to the, if you had an option where it's next to the grandstand, you know, maybe you've got, oh yeah, can you even do this? So what's going on up here? We've got a storage room up here that we're just suggesting, you know, if it was next to it, you could have some sort of maybe like rolling gate or something. So you could have access directly from the track for a storage piece and whatnot. You got the restrooms shown here, one man and one, one woman. And I have, you know, we've looked at the, the codes. So I'd say what's shown here technically with the five hundred seat grandstand, you would need six and a quarter fixtures for women, rounded up to seven, and three point three three for men, rounded up to four. So kind of what we're showing here, you can see we've got five for men, so typically one over the minimum right now. And then we've got the seven kind of required with the two facilities down here for the women. One additional men just kind of times out, just with the footprint of the building, you get one extra, but it just kind of makes sense with the facility. So that's where those are being drawn from. And then down here, you've got your concessions window, could be right off this plaza, you know, you could really activate that space. Maybe you got some of those big wooden spool tables or tables and chairs and whatnot, just really make that an engaging plaza in that scenario.
Gives the people that are working concessions an opportunity to watch the game.
Yeah. So I don't know how you guys run your, your concessions, but growing up, I know we, a lot of ours is volunteer based. And found once, if you have an opportunity for the volunteers to watch the game or be engaged in a part of the experience, it's easier to find volunteers. So that was just kind of an opportunity, you know, if you had a window, could even open and close, kind of right off of that and be right by the game and the people. And then finally, just a mechanical room, water heater, kind of mop sink, typical items. Second option that we just kind of threw together here is a, an option to consider. You know, this one doesn't have the smaller building, doesn't have the storage, since not right next to it, doesn't mean you couldn't have a separate storage facility, kind of off the, the track if you needed. But showing the, the restrooms. And then this one, just a little different look. I know you've got your ticketing building there, which is in pretty good shape. So I could always stay there. But we just showed this kind of space down here where there is an option, there's space where you could have a ticketing window right there, for whatever reason you wanted to, just have it all in one structure, one building. And so the concession. So it's kind of just shown a different location for that. Having the concession kind of plaza up there, maybe a little more close to both sides, visitor at home. But a couple of things to consider.
That being said, when we were looking at the facility, we're looking at, hey, how do all the pieces fall together rather than just one component? Like, we could just look at the track, we could just look at the synthetic turf, but want to see how all of them interact with each other and long-term planning. Like we know, not, you know, not all the funds necessarily become available on day one. So how do we plan this out so that you're not pigeonholing yourself into something that doesn't work for the longevity of the facility? That being said, thinking about timeline, every school district has basically the same window to do all of their projects roughly when track ends and when football starts. So that being said, we start with land surveying and just some of our due diligence on the front end. I know you guys have a lot of existing plans, but sometimes things shift around or something like that. So want to get that done. And then we would start with programming and concept design. So plan out, hey, what are all the components that you need? Meet with the track coaches and football coaches and make sure that we're not recommending something that doesn't work for how you guys actually use the facilities. And then going into construction documents, we might even look at, bumping that up just a hair and getting bidding done here at the beginning of next year. Because everybody likes to, or has the same window, the sooner you have a contractor on board, the easier it is to solidify that timeline and make sure that you're first in line, whether it's for paving or the surfacing or the synthetic turf, even getting that ordered. So if we do that, that helps kind of hone in the timeline. Cause it's roughly from start to finish, if you want to do the track and the synthetic turf, it's going to be about roughly eight to twelve weeks with demo and everything else. So it's very tight. Sometimes we can shuffle around a few things for practices and stuff like that. We usually will work there. Or if we get, you know, the track paved, but then there's the surfacing can't be done until afterwards. Cause there's a thirty day window where the track can't be surfaced until the, the pavement underneath it is cured. So that's really the, the limiting factor on the backend. And then, yeah, construction, the goal would be to be done here, middle of August of twenty twenty-six.
We do have a, kind of an asterisk there too, just a note, depending on phasing requirements and whatnot. Obviously that can shift with phasing and kind of how this thing all comes together and whatnot.
Yeah. If, let's say we want to do just the, just the track right now, the, and synthetic turf's down the road, then the, what we would do on the front end is also sizing your drainage, sizing your drainage now to make sure that it's compliant for future synthetic turf. Usually that pipe is, ends up being a little bit larger and we don't want to have to cut underneath or bore underneath the track. So just running those calcs comparatively and see which one's the higher or the larger pipe. And so that you're set up and you don't have to, you know, dig into something, you just construct it. And then fee structure. I think these were in the proposal. Josh, did anything change here? I apologize. This was, this was one of Kyle's slides.
Yeah. So from, from the proposal, you may notice that it is a little more competitive than what it was before. And part of that is, we'll get to it also in a minute. We are definitely a partnership based, based firm relationship. Really want the opportunity to work with you guys. So we really kind of, really sharpened the pencils and essentially took a lot, majority of the kind of profit and overhead out of this, just to kind of get hopefully to be able to work with you all on this project. So that's the one change from what was in the proposal originally.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've just kind of looked at what team was going to be available at the time. And so having more of our efficient sports and recs dedicated folks, not that they weren't already going to be on it, but just more of our experienced team does help us just lower that just a smidge. So.
So kind of wrapping it up, coming full circle. Why, why us? Why, why are we here today? And why are we kind of wanting to work with you guys? First and foremost, we kind of talked about, but we've got a dedicated sports and rec team that really focuses on these types of projects, day in and day out, that would be working on this project. And we've got one full service in-house team. So there's one point, one point of contact. You know, if, if something comes up for the civil side or the architecture, structural, it's not, you reaching out to a partner who has to then reach out to their contractor or their consultant to figure it out. It's reach out to Kyle and we're all right there. It's kind of one person, no matter what the item is or whatnot. Partnerships over transactions, I kind of just mentioned that. We definitely don't ever want to come into a project or a district or a community and just be like, alright, this is the project, here you go. It's like, we, we want to grow with you. We want to kind of be along, get to know you and really kind of help along the ride in the future. So with that, questions? Did we hit the five minute warning?
Yeah, she, she.
I don't want to be too disruptive. No, you guys are great. So now we'll begin our So now we'll begin our 15-minute Q and A section, so I'll be the timekeeper for that as well, and does anybody want to kick us off?
Yeah, I've got a question. So that, it's a pretty sporty timeline, August. How do you guys feel, or what's your track record? There's a lot of sports going on. As far as completing on time, I know that's a broad question and there's a lot of variables, but just self-assessment.
Right, yeah, based off of, I mean, design timeline, totally not a problem, it's more construction. The, I think the flex, not the flexibility, but the pieces that we can kind of work with is, okay, let's say we hit that 30-day cure window, and we're not going to get there right before football starts. What we would do is, if there's two weeks back-to-back that, like, the football's away, or even just one week where football's away, that's the week that we would end up putting that surfacing on, and then it only needs about a day before it can, so like, if that's a Friday, then by the time they're back on Monday, we can, we can get striping done and stuff like that, then we don't have to worry about it as much.
Other questions? Angela, anything from your standpoint on the budget side?
What was your original bid? Seven.
You got it there?
I do.
Question on the, question on the timeline, so right now, you're thinking August, break ground in August? Project completion.
Project completion. Sorry, the header was completion of each of those.
Okay, I was going to say, how do we push that timeline up a little bit?
No, 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 so yeah, the goal would be to start right after track is done, start demoing, and then.
Yeah, that's why.
Actually, can you go back to that slide? Yeah, estimated completion of each of those places.
Oh, okay. Okay. Very good. And from the budgeting standpoint, kind of going off that piece as well, have been in contact with the grandstand for, just for reference, those 500-seats probably looking at about 350 to 375 is what the grandstand manufacturer is saying for the cost, not including concrete, just for reference.
We also reached out to the planning mission, yeah.
Just to work through the planning accounts, see if there's any way to maybe use temporary facilities and whatnot, but I know it's, have a challenge.
So the initial is for phase one, 24,500, and that'll be 24,200, and then 6.9% of the construction was dropped to 6%.
Any additional questions? You guys were just so thorough. Didn't think of any questions, you did great, thank you so much.
Either you zoned out, which that's not.
No. I'm impressed.
I love coming back to schools, because I like, all is like my favorite time. I feel like I'm.
There's so much anticipation.
Yeah, over the year. Like, I mean, new clothes or something.
Is that a new school outfit?
I can see it, you're just stunned. Just joking.
Dread.
I just like it. I remember last night, we were on the free.
I loved it.
That little, yeah, a little bit of tension, it was in the air.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you.
First up on us.
You tell Kyle you did a great job, this is double.
Thank you. Thank you, nice meeting you, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Kyle was, he was bummed out, but.
Actually, there's some flu going around.
Yeah, right before school.
Put that out of the way before we start, right?
Cold morning.
We just ignore it.
Just go.
Go to work.
Yep.
But they did used to call me patient here.
Oh, gosh.
Okay. I don't want to see anybody else out there earlier, so I don't know.
We are running a little bit ahead of time, too, so. Not a whole thirty minutes. These are just.
Yeah, we're potentially 32 minutes ahead of on their schedule, although it could be ahead of schedule, but.
Want to take a. Do we want to move on with the remainder of the agenda and circle back? What does everybody think about that?
That's a great idea.
Whole idea. Okay, we'll then go forward to administrative reports. Katie, Chris, you guys good with that?
What's up?
We're going to just go ahead and move forward in the agenda, since Pan isn't here right now, but we are moving, we're about 32 minutes ahead of time, because we're very limited. Q and A.
Yes.
So let's, yeah, move forward with administrative reports, starting with elementary.
All right, we will have NAEP testing that will be placed at Cheddar Colony this year. We don't have a choice in that NAEP testing. They kind of come to your school, they say, here's the selected group of people, that group of students, it'll be fourth grade, and then that group of students, it actually alternates students, so they don't even know what tests they're taking, and you can open the math of reading. They take the test, we don't get any results back from that, they use those results, the results, you can see nationwide how students did in NAEP, and then they use, NAEP testing is used to set norms for other tests, so that's, that's why we do it. So it'll be Cheddar Colony this year that will have that. We are going to be doing Girls on the Run in the elementary this year, lots of schools around here do that, it's a program that is for girls in grades three through six that teaches them confidence, self-worth, so it'll be after-school hours, for about an hour and a half, and then they also train to run a 5K by the end of Girls on the Run. So it's an eight-week program, so that will, you'll see the registration come out on that, we're working with Girls on the Run out of Sioux Falls right now for that, so that's exciting. Our elementary library, we received the new furniture for that last week, so today we have been moving furniture all day long, and it is done, so you can go check that out if you want to see the new furniture in the elementary library. It's FormCore, so it's, I don't know, it's, it's nice and comfy and not hardwood spots for kids to sit and read, so we're excited about that. We have an art closet, we created an art closet this summer for the teachers to put all the art supplies in one space, and kind of clean up the library, too, because our roll paper and all that stuff was just kind of hanging out in there, so we have a new spot for that, so it's a super nice little space for teachers to kind of get things, you know, random things that they purchase that you don't even think of, like gumballs or something, you know, we can put them all in one spot, so we have that. Our title program monitoring for the 25, 26 school year will be a Level 2, you can go from Level 1 all the way to Level 4. So for a Level 1, if it were a Level 1, you would submit your consolidated app by July 1st, which we have, and then you would upload all your documents, documents to Title Crate. A Level 2 just adds that third bullet, which is that our staff needs to attend at least one annual training session in a relevant area of need specific to title programs. So last year, I think we were either a 3 or 4, so a Level 2 is better, so that's good. So we'll be working on that this year for Title. And then the admin team, we attended the ASBSD and the SASD convention last week, so that was good, there was lots of good sessions there. And then upcoming, we have our back-to-school night, so that's the little flyer for the back-to-school night on Monday. My student handbook is, I have given you that, everything that's yellow is, has been updated or changed. You can peruse that on your own, I don't, those in the consent agenda?
They're linked, yes. Not in the consent there.
Somewhere in here, yeah. So when it gets to that point, if you have any questions on those, or if you have any questions now, that is there.
I have a question on the title monitoring, what, what changes the levels, like, what are they looking at?
It's a great question. Honestly, to be honest, it's kind of like, we don't really know, but speculation is staff changeover, which we've had every year. And then uploading your things into Title Crate, I don't know, what else, we have grants that go through, maybe how loads are spent, it's kind of a mystery as to how you, what your designation is and how you get there.
Government magic.
Yeah, it is. I, I don't know the answer, I've asked that, and nobody really knows, but I do know that staff changeover is one.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see if we're Level 1 next year.
Do you have any questions? We'll do the high school principal report.
All right, so we have the tech checkout dates, it will be just Wednesday and Thursday, and sophomores will be at 6:00, juniors 6:30, and seniors at 7:00. Thursday, then we would start with 7th grade at 6:00, 6:30 would be 8th grade, and then at 7:00 PM we would have the freshmen. Katie did talk about the open house, which is scheduled from 5 to 7, and then the 7th graders will have their orientation at 6:00 PM here in the library, and then student council members will take them around. For activities, football and soccer started on 8/7, is off to a great start, all football players have completed the sway test, cross-country started today, and then volleyball starts on Thursday, the 14th, and sway testing will also be completed for them on that date.
I know previously, some practices, mostly football, has conflicted with the tech checkout dates, are there going to be like alternatives, or which is going to let?
Yeah, they'll.
They'll just. They're in when they.
If they don't get it that night, they.
Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, sounds good.
I'm here pretty much all the time, so they can come.
Sounds good. Okay. Superintendent report.
We are gearing up for another school year, and we're trying to finish our summer projects before that happens. Looks like we'll be fairly successful at the custodial shed we have taken possession of, so that is, that project is completed. Hanging up on that one is one concrete slab, and that slab was poured and was done to our specifications, and that gave us the ability to send off the final payment for that, so we, it was just in time for us to move everything back into the band and choir room with our athletic groups that came in to help us out with that, and also everything that was currently in the shop that was going to go into the new storage, or the new custodial shed, and they moved all that stuff out as well, so we were able to take occupancy of that just in time and get the stuff back into the band and choir rooms just in time, too. So still trying to rummage through things and get it back organized, again, our teachers are doing a great job with that, but the carpeting will not be 100% complete, let me rephrase that, the base will not be 100% complete, the carpeting is complete, we have carpeting in the band, carpeting in choir rooms, and the drafting room and the hallway, so that's all finished. The base is finished, the toe kick that's in, the risers for the choir room, and all the base around in the choir and the band, they're coming back this week to finish up the classroom for the drafting room, and then they, they have just enough for that, and then they have on order for the rest of the hallway, so we'll start the year off likely without the base and the hallway, but that should be within a week or two into the school year that we'll finish up with that, so won't be too far. The first two rows of the junior, senior high parking lot, that's what we identified as the worst two areas of our parking lot with, as far as the parking lot paint that had wore off, I think just with the amount of traffic that every, every school day, those are the ones that fill up the most, so it just looked significantly worse than the rest of the parking lot, so they're in the process, they started painting that today, they ran out of paint, so they'll be coming back tomorrow, and then as long as we're, have them here, we decided that we're going to add some lines and freshen up the basketball lines on our playground, and then put on a lines for a pickleball court, two pickleball courts for PE, to be able to go out there and use that outdoors, would be kind of a fun element to that, and then some foursquare courts for kids during recess, and some hopscotch that we're going to put on the sidewalks, so they're, they ordered up some, some stencils for that, and they're going to come back and do different colors on our playground parking, or playground area, so you can tell where the different courts are at. So excited to see what that turn, how that turns out. We're excited to have staff back in the building, it's hard to believe that Friday we're kicking off with all staff being back, and then Monday, second day with staff, and then first day of students will be on Tuesday, so we're here, we're there, we're here or not, here they come.
On that parking lot, do you have any idea what's going on with the significant drop-off when you drive into the elementary parking lot?
From the road to the.
Yeah, it feels like we discovered South Dakota's first fault line or something, it's like.
Oh, gosh.
I did notice that, I don't know if that's anything that we can do about that one, it seems as though that would be a city issue with the road. I can certainly look at that and see if there, maybe connect with the city and see if there's some way that we can improve that, but I did notice that this summer when I drove that direction with the lawnmower.
Yeah.
It bottomed out pretty good, so.
Let me just tell Katie to take it home, address that on your free time.
I'll make a note to look into that.
Sounds good. Okay, is SPN here?
They are.
So do we want to go ahead and circle back to number three under unfinished business? We'll hear a presentation from SPN Helms. Set up here.
Katie, do we have a 5K scheduled then for the students to, is there one that's going to be scheduled if they're planning or working on it for anyone?
Yeah, it's, since you've all hung up first, so all of the girls on the run.
If you want to set up over there, you can set up on the table, either one you want.
Friends and company.
On which side are you interested?
Stay over a while, so we'll work about it. Yeah, things are excited.
Don't you think? If you have a camera where you're running the livestream, I'm going to try to catch what I can, so. From the board or behind.
Hi there, thank you so much for coming and presenting to us. So as a reminder, we have 20 minutes for, up to 20 minutes for presentation, and then up to 15 minutes for question and answer. I will be your timekeeper, and I will hold up five minutes when you have five minutes remaining for you, okay?
All right, well, I'll kind of get us started here, I'm Jeff McCormick, Mitchell office. I got to work on the wrestling room addition project with Catherine on that one. With me is Bob Babcock, he's out of our Aberdeen office, and they do a lot more of the sports complexes, so that's kind of why we've got him involved here. So our, our project team, like I said, myself, Jeff McCormick out of the, out of the Mitchell office, I'd be one of the project managers, as well as Bob, just because they've got more experience in the field side of it. Lucas Hoover is a design engineer that has been with SPN Helms for, guy's almost been pushing 20 years now, and he does a lot of our sports complexes as, as the project engineer. Catherine and Jacob will be the, the team from JLG, and then we've got design technician Craig Harrison out of the Aberdeen office that has drafted numerous of these type of facilities, and really provides a lot of experience on how to get those drawings prepared for, for construction.
And the four of us, Jeff and myself and Lucas and Craig, were the ones that were involved at Hanson County, I'm sure you're familiar with that project, so. We didn't have architects on that one, because it was a construction manager at risk, and we kind of worked alongside with them.
So the biggest thing is to make communication, any successful project's going to have a lot of communication, and that's where, I'm one hour away, I grew up a half hour away from here in Bridgewater, familiar with the area, I'm able to be over here at a, at a short notice, as well as, as anyone from our team in the Mitchell office. It allows us to communicate and be readily available as we need it. So that'll be kind of my role of the project, I'll be able to attend any meetings we'd have, like the Hanson project, we did a lot of almost weekly construction meetings, because we had a really accelerated timeline for that one to go through design. So Lucas wouldn't come down necessarily from Aberdeen for every one of those meetings, but I was at every one of them, so I was able to provide that, that part of it, that communication. It just allows us to keep all of us involved and within the project.
It just allows us to keep all of us involved and within the project, so.
One of the things I think sets us apart is experience. And I think everybody here has experience with turf fields and with tracks and those kinds of things. But we kind of live it. It's kind of a life for Jeff and I. I have four kids, three of them played college athletics. Jeff has one currently running for SDSU. He's got kids that have played hockey, football.
We've gotten the whole thing, golf, baseball, basketball, hockey, football, track. Yep.
So we both, it's just been a way of life for us. So we have a real passion and I hope you see that. I think that makes a difference. Because we don't just have the technical experience, we got the life experience of being the parents in the stands and chasing around all the places on the fields and stuff like that, too. So we'll bring that experience as well. I will, next five slides, I'm just going to show you because it's ones that we've done and I want to point some things out. But after that, I promise the rest of the presentation will be proven. So I think it's pertinent to you, though. This is resurfacing that we've done on a field that we did back in about two thousand and five in Aberdeen. We just redid the turf for the first time and the track. I really like when you do the exchange zones. I think that looks really sharp. The green track is a lot cooler on those hot days. But it kind of shows, too, you can do other things. You can put in the soccer field markings or you could put in, I know there's interest maybe in softball field markings and stuff like that. You can work those in as well as catering to certain things. This is Hanson County. We did do the track there, eight lane track and field. Just wanted to show, this one show, well, this one basically was track and field. How we did the.
That one included all lightings with some press box expansion as well on that project as well.
It's a close up because you can't really tell from far away how sharp and crisp it looks in the end zones. But I think you can make them look really nice and do a lot of things with it. Also did Warner. One of the things unique to Warner is they, they did a fundraiser and they got a couple of local sponsors. I think they got seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars each from them to help offset some of the costs. They actually raised nine hundred thousand in about sixty days in Warner to help pay for the field. So there are ways to, to do that as well. And again, it's hard to see how sharp that field looks until you get close. And then I just think that red outline and stuff just makes things pop. And they, they used black, they did do soccer, but they used black lines for their soccer instead of yellow. Well, there's tons of options. We just show you these as examples. I think they also show what size of community that we're used to working in. This is our bread and butter. Town's the size of Freeman, that's where we are. You're not going to be second fiddle to us, you are a primary. This is the type of facilities and the type of communities that we work in every day, so. Pros project, we can just show a couple potential layouts. We get the question answered, we always bounce back if you've got any questions. But we did show one like this. I think this is the one that we had in the proposal. I did, just for fun, throw gray on because I think sometimes it softens it a little bit. So those are options that you guys drive the boat on. We do whatever you guys like along those lines. You can see all the buildings that you're talking about and the bleachers. So new track and structures, primary options. I'm sure you've talked about already with most, but your branded type is going to dictate a lot of your cost on your track. What kind of text you want to put on, the colors, field events, bleachers, we know about what you want for bleachers, press box, storage garage is just something that I think would be important on the end of the track for storing things for hurdles and jump pits, that kind of stuff. And concessions and restrooms. Proposed grading, so typically on a track, in our area, we do about forty-two inches of granular, or granular and surfacing. So we'd have about twenty-seven inches of re-draining sand gravel and then twelve inches of a good base course and then three inches of asphalt and then a rubberized surface. You currently have thirty-three inches, which may be adequate here. First thing we do is suggest getting a soil boring geotechnical review to see. My concern with your track, and this is going to be engineering nerd for you, but my concern with your track, my look at the old plans, is I don't see any fabric at the bottom and I don't see any under drains leaving it. So basically, I think you've got a bathtub built there that's holding water. And when you hold water, it does the opposite of what you're trying to do and that's stay away from rusted problems. You have, and I'll get to another picture that'll show, you do have drains and underdrain in on the football field, but they're ten to fifteen feet away from the edge of the track. So you got a clay layer that's keeping it from getting there. So if you didn't do a field, you would just run some laterals, put in underdrain with the track project and tie into what's already there. If you do the turf field, then we'd probably have about a twelve inch storm sewer pipe that we would collect everything to and get out of there. Reason that fabric would be important is you get water down there that sits and you got clays around it. It takes that clay and it migrates into your, what you want free draining. And that causes more problems. So that's the other reason we would want soil boring, to see how much we could salvage and reuse to try to save costs of what's already there. This kind of shows the area, the area drains are out in here somewhere. So that's why I'm saying I, I think there's an area that's trapping water on your track. Unless there's something that we aren't seeing on plans. Regardless, if you do the turf football field or not, we would suggest putting your curbing in like this. This would be your track over here, or your track here, potential field over here. So if you just left the grass, we'd leave it like that. But we'd still do the curbing with a two inch notch so that you could attach turf someday if you decide to. So that's one of the things that we would suggest. Bleachers and press box. Tell them what happened with Catherine.
Catherine was traveling and a vacation and I'm not sure if it was flight or something with that, but she was not able to make it to us tonight, so.
She was planning on being here. She's the one that was involved with your wrestling room. And she really wanted to be here. She had a family reunion out of state. She was trying to get back for it and something happened with her travel. We just found out this morning she couldn't be here. But this is a JLG project at Dakota State that was done two years ago, holds five hundred and eighteen people. So if you're wondering what it looks like, that's probably what a five hundred person set of bleachers looks like. You can see it was actually in construction when they took the picture. They did have the press box. Does look like they put some kind of probably a filming area or something up here for practices and stuff, too. So this is right in their wheelhouse of things they've already done. Concessions and plaza, this is one of their project, another of their projects that they've done, just combined concessions, restrooms, just like you are. This will be a piece of cake. You got sewer and water already running right by all that, so that part will be easy. Got some restrooms that they put in. Storage building, I didn't take any pictures. I think you know what a garage looks like, right? So I just wanted to mention, and I'm sure it's something that you'd want to take a look at. Turf football field. Primary options are branded type again. I've got a bunch of samples. I don't know if we'll have time to get to it at question and answer or not, but I'm going to keep buzzing because we got twenty, right? So branded type, color, pattern, end zone, logos, tact, alternate markings, like we talked softball or soccer or whatever you want, and equipment that comes with it to maintain it. That's your primary options. Big concern there for us is the grading. A lot of times people don't realize how much grading goes into a project to change it to turf. But right now, you have a two percent ground on your football field, which is the pink. And this line here is a half a percent if you go to the turf. You have, unless we adjust the grade up, which we're going, we would do probably to try to save some costs, half foot or a foot, there's thirty inches of material on average that needs to come out of there, close to ten thousand yards of dirt to haul out. So if we can raise it some and minimize that, I think you're still going to have six to seven thousand yards of dirt to do something with. So that's one of our concerns with that.
So like when we looked at the Hanson field, it was kind of the same thing. There was like, let's do the track, we'll maybe think about the, the turf if we got, we got money available. But we went through and tried to evaluate that cost difference of having to dig all the way down to keep their field where it was at with the track, or be able to raise everything up so we don't have to haul as much material out of there. And with that, obviously, they ended up going, going with the whole thing all at once. But that would be a concern we'd have, you know, if we bid the alternates of it, it's, you know, or you look at it as a future, we might lose some of that savings that we could get otherwise within the turf field. And it's just trying to balance that quantities and how much that material has to go away.
So site-specific considerations. You guys know what you have there, but I mean, this is just a lot of concrete block and demo, right? This actually, this manhole is over here as always, but I kind of morphed them together. Sanitary sewer is right there and I know water is, too. So when I look at one of the ways in and out, which I'd call the, looks like the easy way, you can already see all the cracks in there in the concrete and leaving is just as bad or worse. So one thought we had was maybe we take this fence down, there's already a gate out on this side, maybe we can get out to that road and out here to get rid of the demo that way. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk timeline, too. Here's some of the drains. This is the drain that's in the football field. I popped a lid and took a picture of, that's the lid, but it's not under the track. So that's where we could tie into. It's about three and a half feet deep, so it would work to drain the track, too, with some laterals if we had to. And that's just showing some of your rough drains coming in. And I know you got a big enough sewer, sewer going, too. Storm pump station. So that's, we'd have to look. If you do the football field, you're fine for the track. If you do the football field, we'd probably have to look at the pumps, see if those needed to be upgraded or not. Get a shot at some of your field events, you know, maybe you'd want to probably resurface anyway and maybe put some surfacing around them. And if the sand isn't good, we could get you some new sand. Pole vault. Shot. And desk, because all seem okay. I didn't take a picture of the high jump, you know where it's at. I think you'd probably just want to resurface. It doesn't look like it's a terrible gate. So timeline, first of all, how much time do we have left?
Five and a half minutes.
So timeline, this is a little different than what we had in your proposal. We thought a little harder after we got shortlisted about it. And I've really tried to think of ways that we can make this the best that we can for you and, and cost effective. So we're still looking at design kickoff in a week if that works. Obviously, we're on your schedule at that point. Schematic design complete September fifteenth, which is about a month. We've got a lot of stuff on paper that would be easy to tweak already. We've done the topographic survey when we looked at your baseball stuff and stuff, fields on the other side of the parking lot. So we've got a lot of topo survey already that we can glean off of. Final design, we'd be looking in December. Advertising in December, it's a terrible time to bid because contractors are A, getting hit with liquidated damages and they're frustrated, or they're on vacation. So we'd advertise them, but we'd suggest opening bid like second or third week in January, probably. Let them get recouped and realize, oh, hey, I want to work again. I think they're getting a little hungrier. But I would really like to see it bid in January because one thing with that demo, I'd really like to see happen is that go out when the ground's frozen. Because it's not going to rut everything up as bad, it's not going to ruin the streets. So we could get a lot of that, that concrete block and the stuff off the bleacher area that's there now, out of there without trashing things. There are some things that are just going to have to wait till things thaw. So we still have a lot of material to take out of there. But that's one thing we could get started in February and that would allow us then to get going on buildings in March, March, April, if the frost comes out of the ground and cooperates. So, and that would be nice to have a little extra time on the buildings. Because school starts, I believe, the week of the seventeenth next year. It's the week of the nineteenth this year, right? We've got state track meet this year is the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth of May. And I don't know how long you're going to want your track to practice, so we'd have to work with you on that, on how soon we could actually get started. But we want to be the first on the list because everybody in our area wants their fields done at the same time. So we want to bid first and we want to be first in line with the contractors. Then we're looking at being done before school starts. And you guys have it pretty good because you got practice football fields that you can utilize till, till game time, so. Engineering fees, no different than what we gave you in the proposal. It's hourly rate not to exceed on the schematic. Final design lump sum for architectural, forty-eight, three, civil for track and field, seventy, and civil for artificial turf football field would be sixty. Would not change. Unless there was ways we could find savings or something, obviously, we would. Bidding phase, this is something I need to talk about because not everybody you talk to does what we do. We do our own testing. A lot of them probably do construction staking, but we do our own testing as well. That will be a savings. Otherwise, they hide it in with the specifications, quotes from guys like us that actually have to come do it. Our guys that are already here on inspection would be capable of doing that testing. Thank you. Just a question, I know you got new involved, but it didn't look like LED lights. That's obviously something that we'd be willing to work on with you if your budget allowed.
Plenty of time.
So I did, I did want to talk just, do I have a minute?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
For that one minute, I want to talk about softball because I know that's something that there is some interest on doing on the field. One of the things Jeff and I talked about was thinking outside of the box a little bit and maybe, maybe an option, and not set in stone, but maybe something to even look at is what if you put home plate at midfield? You run your lines out across the field and maybe in a gray color or something like that. It wouldn't take away from football because it's running at an angle instead of causing confusion. And you got your bleachers right there then behind looking at it, face the southwest. So, and we could throw a mat down on the track and really all that's back there is the backstop. You do have room, it's two hundred and five feet across your field. So if home plate's there, you probably could get maybe a hundred and ninety-five to two hundred foot fence. And the only thing that would be across the, you'd have to put turf out for to the backstop would be twenty-five feet back onto the track. With that, questions?
Okay, we'll start a fifteen minute question and answer. And I'll be the timekeeper for that as well. Does anybody want to throw us out?
I was curious if I could see the fee structure again. I didn't get my time.
How we did the fee structure?
I didn't either.
So the schematic design is hourly rate not to exceed. So if we do it for less than this, you'll pay less than this. I can just about tell you that it'll probably be over this, you won't pay over this. The design is lump sum. So it's set in stone unless there's a scope change of some type, that won't change. Forty-eight thousand, three hundred for architectural for restroom concessions, bleachers, press box and storage facility. Civil for track and field events, seventy thousand lump sum and sixty thousand per, so those won't change. They'd be set in stone. And those are big, those aren't things we just pulled out there. We know what it takes based on the ones that we've already got.
And then far as the construction phase, as I was saying, there's a lot of variations of what we could do there and whether you're going to go a construction manager at risk or you could do a design build. You know, whether we're going to just do construction administration or we're on-site to do observation and testing, construction staking, I mean, that one's really a lot of, lot of variables on that depending on how you want that delivery method. When we did the Hanson system, they had a construction manager at risk. So we were just doing basically some administration duties of it. A lot of the ones that they've done with Aberdeen, Warner, they were doing full construction administration and observation on it. So that was just a contractor build. They didn't have a construction management at risk company for those scenarios.
And that's why you see in our proposal that the construction admin and resident engineering, construction taking, testing, stuff is to be determined because we don't know what you want us to do for school.
You talked about, you know, working with those very accelerated timelines with Hanson. Can you talk a little bit through like what was, what was the timeline there?
It was probably November, well, maybe, or it was late fall. I mean, I think the school year had already started and they, they I mean, I think school year had already started, and they wanted us to be ready to bid into January. So, I would say it was fairly close to where I was with this one, but probably a little bit early on that one. The, of course, any of this stuff, everybody's excited about it, right? So, you get a group of people together to sit down and just, ideas are just flying all over the place. So, having those weekly meetings to go through them and talk about what that was gonna cost, alright, try to throttle them back down a little bit, then all the fundraising's picking up, and, I mean, so, a lot of that expanded kinda as we were going with that. I mean, we sat down on that one in the first meeting, it was, it was a track with maybe we'll bid a turf alternate or in the future, and it evolved into the full outdoor field complex, the whole track, the whole turf, the press box extension, all of that was, was part of it, so. But yeah, it was, we were moving pretty, pretty quick from that standpoint.
If we started demo on the current stadium that early, that would create some issues with our current track schedule for next year. What we see is some options that we can utilize for seating for our spectators if we, if we don't have access to our current stadium.
Well, I would say if we can get it down to at least a slab on grade, maybe we have to stop there for the time being, then we just kinda look at portable bleachers, and you've already got, I believe, some of that on your visitor's side now, right? So, maybe it's moving some of that part of it around. If we're able to get far enough that we can start getting foundations in and stuff of that nature, well, maybe we gotta just see if we can, you know, somewhat run the other side for your, your main events, and, and we just go with those bleachers on the other, on the other side as your, you know, your standard finish line, you know, that'd be another thing that could be like that.
Probably online, do we have them scheduled, do we, do we have a schedule, or do we have them scheduled?
I tried to find it on the South Dakota High School, and I looked on your calendar, but I didn't see the...
They're all inbound. Well, actually, they're on Athletic, aren't they, for the track needs?
And I mean, maybe that doesn't allow us to go through that demo, you know, ahead of time, because then, you know, we might not be talking restroom facilities and then some of that stuff that would come and complicate that, that part of it, but, I mean, all, I mean, all those things that we can come up with solutions, right? We can come up with...
I think it's something that we would wanna, we would wanna explore with you, because it could be a huge thought saving, you know, what we're willing for whatever thirty thousand dollars, we're willing to have porta-potties for three track meets. You would have to tell us where that would be a difference.
April twenty-third and then May fourth and fifth.
What else?
Other questions? Angelique, anything from your perspective, from a budget perspective?
So, you know, we have estimated costs put together. Well, we're not gonna share them because we don't know what you wanna put, it, it's a big range on what track you pick and what turf you pick, those kinds of things. But it won't take us long, and you will have an estimate, you'll be able to make conclusions if you go with us. We're ready to hit the ground running.
Other questions? I don't have any, that was very thorough, thank you.
What I was thinking as far as the construction delivery method, are you, are you leaning towards a construction manager at risk, or just a design build?
Construction manager.
Construction manager?
You know, would that would be, would that have been selected?
No.
How many minutes are left?
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes, do you guys have any interest in seeing the process of the turf going in?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Well, we're gonna go to that. This is our ending slide, we do feel we're the most qualified team, you are gonna work directly with the owners. We don't bait and switch, we're not here to get the work and then you don't see us. We will be involved from start to finish. We'll have engineers working on it, but we will be the ones that show up as well at the meetings, and so. We do have the enthusiasm, integrity, have we ever made mistakes, yes. We've never run from them, if we make a mistake, we will make it right. That's a guarantee, and I do think we try hard to do the best that we can. We have an awesome staff, lose very few. So, turf process, there's your mass upgrading, when you talk about the excavation. This happens to be at a middle school in Jamestown. They had a parking lot that they wanted to turn into an outdoor play area. So, here you can see the fabric going down, there's under drain. Yours would be different, we'd probably have panel drains, they're about a foot wide and about that thick, and they run at herringbone to pick up the water that runs through. The base stone goes down next, that's about a three-quarter inch quarry rock. And then finished stone, which is about a three-eighths or less inch quarry rock, and that's what lets all the water through. Then they put out the turf, they actually come in five-yard increments. This folds over on this one, they take a hand-sewing machine, they sew them together, flop it over, and then they put the next five yards out. This is putting the sand in fill, there's sand and rubber. Jeff, there's two samples in there, if you wanna pass them around quick. Pill bottles on one of the ends. This is sand going on, and that's the rubber going on, and there will be a pile of that coming in too. Then they take a broom, dents the grass up, gets the sand and the rubber down into it. This is, there, you can see all the bags of rubber back there. And that's the finished product, the roof of the middle, so we use it all the time.
And yes, you will see rubber pellets all over your house and everything for every kid that's...
I was just gonna say, yeah. Player, yep.
Yeah, it'll, it'll come home.
And as far as, as far as your stripes and your stuff like that, you really have... So, what I was saying, you could have...
We'll waste a meeting just going through that.
You could easily have a gray color for your all lines, that's not gonna, you won't even hardly notice them if they're running at an angle across your football field. But, yeah, and then the backing is another story, here, the drainage goes in between all these. Other ones have holes punched, and that's other things we'd show you as the different types of turf. I have them all here, but I've got more about it on time.
Can I curb any other, any other questions?
Well, that was very thorough, anything from anybody else? Thank you.
Work with you guys, this is the passion of ours, and I think it will, will start to finish, so.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate the opportunity, I thought a half hour early would be soon enough, I apologize that you had to wait.
They never run early, I don't know, you maybe should go buy a lottery ticket. So.
So, we have number four, then, we have number four.
Yes. Okay, so, school, sorry, we'll hold this, I was... We'll hold the discussion about our fees submitted for the stadium project. Any comments from our field and grounds fearless committee members? Or should I start with Angelique, her thoughts on fee structure and budget?
As far as fees structured, SPN have the lowest.
I like the fact that it's a little bit more upfront, some, depends, you know, how big of a project you're looking at.
Right.
The design fee, behind SPN, it was, duh, duh, duh. ISG, that was...
Oh, behind that, yeah.
Five hundred for SPN, right?
Yep.
Forty-eight, three. And then for this, the lump sums would be an additional one thirteen.
Seventy and sixty.
Add that together, it'd be the one sixty, one three. Very different structure, but it does come out favorable. And then that one, the thing with that would be, what are we gonna go with as far as construction, or construction management, things like that would all be add-ons to that, that would be unforeseen at this point in time.
Are those fees included in the other two fee structures, I didn't see that.
If we read through their proposal, do you remember seeing if that was part of the...
It says six percent of construction.
Yeah, and each of the other two, no, I think...
Five points, five.
Identified who would be the managers of it.
Right.
Which, which member of their team was gonna be the construction manager, so it would include that.
Right. So, that's something to consider too, because that's gonna be an additional cost.
I personally gravitated towards ISG and SPN, solely based off these structures. I did like the ISG, quick drawing with the, the track site storage. If we're gonna try to dual utilize this, there's gonna be a lot of stuff getting drugged back and forth, and I liked the foresight.
I liked that both SPN and Sayer were more local and had done more local jobs compared to it. That's just one differentiating factor, not that it's good, bad, or indifferent, it's just something that I noticed, that they've worked, you know, around this area, or at least the examples that they provided were from this area as well, and they've had a lot of repeat, or Sayer especially has had a lot of repeat customers, which I think really bodes well as well for, for their, you know, customer service-facing experience, but...
I'm the same with Sayer, it's, it's, they've been in Freeman a lot, doing a lot of work, and you see the quality of work, nothing against the other two, it's just the fact that I've seen the quality of work they do, and I think, I mean, that's who I'm leaning for, towards actually, is, is Sayer, just because we've seen them, and they had, they had a ton of examples of major projects. You know, we're looking at double A schools in Sioux Falls, D-one school, and college.
College.
They've done big and small, and they, and they do it all, and obviously with the work they've done in Freeman, it's been phenomenal, so that's where I'm leaning for.
Yeah, well, did ISG say where they're out of?
A lot of, it's a Minnesota-based company that's expanded into South Dakota.
Like a tri-state presence.
Because that Iowa, that's on the border of Wisconsin, that's east, that's way over there, that Iowa school, so they, they're really rangy as far as where they're at, not that that's a bad thing, but...
Yeah, certainly had a lot of experience as well.
A good company, have previous districts, ISG was part of the projects, they did a very nice job with those.
And they did, just as previously being here when we bid the hanger, I do, I will say too, like Catherine DeKango with JLG, I really thought she was very sharp, she was great to work with from the SPN standpoint of things, I think that experience was really positive as well, but... But I, yeah, I like that Sayer and, and SPN are more local, I think.
Yeah, I think I like Sayer the best as far as their presentation, professionalism, your resume kinda speaks for itself as far as local. But again, I think, I think all three of these companies would do a great job.
I do too, it's, it's great that we have such, three such great candidates, just makes it difficult to choose, though.
Yeah, I don't feel strongly in any three of them, those were my two outliers that I preferred, but...
Just saying, I didn't see that.
Lowest percentage of...
What's that?
Lower percentage of Sayer.
No, the design, well, like point zero five, yeah.
Construction, about twelve thousand.
Point two five.
Oh, seven, I thought, I wrote a nine, point, five point seven five, yeah, I thought I wrote a nine.
I don't think that the difference in design fees, et cetera, is astronomical between any of the three. Or am I not calculating correctly, Angelique, you gotta keep me honest here.
No, I was just pointing that out, is all I was doing.
Yeah, Sayer has almost a three X over design fee of SPN, but depending on the scope of the project.
Yeah, exactly, I know.
We could definitely off-put, I think on like a four million project at the five percent, I come with, I had the mask scribbled here, but now I can't read it. I think it was like two hundred thousand dollars in total fees at like five percent of total construction.
We're on a four point five.
So, it, like, if we're going big at four million, then SPN saves two hundred thousand dollars. If we're gonna scale down in that two million range, then SPN's about a hundred thousand dollars more.
But also, Sayer includes the construction manager, and that's gonna be an additional cost.
Yeah, that's my more vote would locate whether we go on the percentage of total construction versus the flat fee.
Right.
Would be more a conversation on the scope of work we actually want to have done.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I guess we're, now my thoughts are aligning, that if we're going holy crap, then SPN has a much more well palatable fee structure.
I'd be fine with either of those two. I mean, all three were candidates, but...
I did appreciate how much SPN brought for our stuff in, like, they really went through, they thought about...
Yeah, it was detailed.
Taking out the old stuff and...
I did too, that was very detailed, and even, yeah, exactly, the alter, I had that written down as well, like, the alternative route, the positive to doing it while the ground is still frozen to minimize damage to your thing, I thought that that was, there, there were a lot of details in there that I appreciated as well.
Well, I'll be my vote for SPN.
My vote will be for Sayer, I just thought, I agree with David, their, they, their professionalism seemed really great, and they had, I, I liked their presentation and the work they've done in Freeman.
David, Katie, thoughts?
Yeah, I, I still feel...
Sayer?
I, I mean, I don't know much about construction, so I, my, my opinion really is only based, I, SPN is kinda where I'm leaning, but that's strictly just because I really appreciated how much they showed us of our stuff, and, and Sayer, I think, they, I think they'll do amazing jobs too. I would be between SPN and Sayer also, so either one, I just really appreciated how much they brought in and how much forethought, not that Sayer probably isn't, but they showed it to us on their presentation, and so that I really appreciated that, what they brought through.
That would be the... Yeah, I know, I love that.
And the other thing is there...
This was supposed to be decided before it came to me.
Construction is August fifteenth, Sayer's say in October too, so, I mean, there's, not that faster is always better either, but there's that too.
For the construction management, I mean, what, does anybody have any idea as far as like what that cost might be? Because I, I'm mostly basing my, you know, when you brought up a good point, like, if it, if we're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, that's gonna sway me a little bit more, but...
And I'll clarify, so you got project manager and construction manager, so they identified project managers, so that wouldn't necessarily be the construction management of it, so it might be an additional cost with these.
Regardless, okay.
I, I'm thinking it is because they're saying construction drawing, so that percentage is gonna be... In there. In there.
That's what I, that's what I was wondering too, because it seems like it would be a big difference between the two, so if the cost is gonna be...
Yeah, astronomical or something, yeah.
I don't know, SPN didn't have a placemat.
It just means how more fiscally responsible they are.
Yeah, you're right.
How more fiscally responsible they are, they don't need to do this, so it's not like these guys are...
I did really like the photographs for SPN too, like with the gray track and the, again, a lot of the details, kind of that Katie already...
Yeah, it was definitely customized.
I do agree, I think they look quite confident, like, or at least it relies with what is the most fiscally responsible decision for the district, and hundreds of thousands of dollars is a lot of money.
Yep. I'd rather spend it on something else.
Yep. I don't know what that is, but I'm in favor.
Structure for SPN probably the best.
That's my opinion.
What I do, I do too, I liked that it was a flat fee, it seemed a little bit more.
So I mean, if it varies wildly based on how much we anticipate we're gonna be spending on this project, then do we have a discussion about what we estimate, or would that be just a total shot in the dark, so it's not gonna help us?
So communication I've had with anybody that's been onsite...
Yeah, I know, we've gotten some, some numbers from some surrounding schools with similar projects as well.
It's a comparable one, for pieces of this project, but they're, they're doing, taking a cornfield and starting from scratch, and this is very, very different from that standpoint, that we have the infrastructure in place, and Viber Hurley had, I was told that they had eight hundred thousand dollars just in infrastructure, those are gonna have to happen with moving dirt, and thus having most of that here, you know, that would save a significant cost for us, but I've thrown out the number, actually, the number was proposed to me, that it should be right around that four to four and a half million dollars if we did the full project, full scale with the dirt, and that's been communicated with me, but that, that should be added, with the competitive bid market that we're in right now, could be even less than the four million mark.
So if we're looking at four million, SPN significantly less, correct?
Yeah.
Like significantly, like, maybe that.
I know, that's, that's the thing that I'm getting hung up on.
Sixty thousand a million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars for their ish fee, if we went four plus million dollars, plus the forty-eight thousand, would put them right about a three hundred thousand dollar total cost on theirs if we went the whole shooting match, versus SPN's would be about one ninety for theirs. But if we don't have the stomach for four million, I don't necessarily have the stomach for four million.
It's all a percentage, it's a sliding curve.
So if we get down into a scope of two million, kind of a horse apiece.
Right, yeah.
But then also, you'd probably be taking off things like you, the turf for SPN, because they broke it down by each category.
Right.
If we weren't gonna do a four million project, we probably won't be...
We'd be turfs down, right.
I would, I would argue that due to judgment on how, what do you wanna see for a project, and if it's the four million vision, then SPN is, saves lots of money.
I think, given that we have, have had positive experiences while with JLG, with the hanger, that's, that's good to know, just to have that personal experience. Any final thoughts?
Yeah, I guess that's, I get to be real ambivalent with that, like, if we're looking at four million, I wanna go with SPN.
Yeah.
If we're not, then I wanna go with Sayer, I think that's where I'm...
I'm kind of the same.
I like, I like the presentation, I like, I feel like they're really believable, but I don't know if they're a hundred thousand dollars extra believable. That's what we're looking at, I don't wanna sign up for that.
Determining factor for whether we go for or not is if we have interest in football fields as part of this project. If that's not looked at as important or necessary right now at this point in time, then, then turf is not a viable option from, for the district, in my opinion. We do have a nice facility, we have a nice football complex with a nice crown, we pump a lot of money into making sure that we take care of the weeds and we keep it nice and green as much as possible. That does come at a cost, so there's a cost savings with the turf, but ultimately, the only thing that would really justify the turf is the multi-use facility.
I think that just makes good sense for our community, though, too, if our community is supporting, you know, this, this project, it would be nice to be able to extend and offer those, you know, use of the concession stands, use of the bathrooms, et cetera, beyond, you know, essentially, we're talking, what, seven events a year? Because four football games and then three track meets. I think it just makes sense to also try and fold in and try and include other sports as well, so that the community can, like, for softball and baseball as well, I think that just makes more sense.
And I lean towards the turf as well, we're, we're down a custodian, a relative portion of their tasks, we're trying to outsource cleanings, we're down, if we could take that off their plate, or at least a large portion of painting lines and mowing, yeah, I don't know what the return is on that, but I think we just might not have the manpower to maintain it.
What's the cost difference between turf and grass? We keep the grass, we put turf in, what's the turf gonna cost along?
One point two for the infrastructure, and then next, next time around.
So that's a lot of hourly wages, actually.
Oh, yeah.
How long is it gonna take to make up that one point two million?
I don't think you will.
Financially, it doesn't pay.
And I'm just, and I'm just speaking as a former football player, I hate a turf.
But it would provide a provision for softball, which we don't currently have. And the softball...
Well, I think, you still could, you could do it, you know, I've seen a lot of softball fields on football fields.
Well, yeah, I think ISG had one that they showed where you could put the stakes in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm talking natural, yeah, with natural grass.
Yeah.
That's still an option on natural grass, on a, on a grass field, still.
Yeah, I guess it all goes back to, what do we want to do? We identified the stadiums that we need to address, and the track we need to address, field's fine, do we just stay focused on that because of our somewhat perilous state of a co-op? We don't know where the sports actually lie. Still have a track team, though, so...
What are we gonna do for the, if we put turf in, are we gonna go right away with flyers?
Yeah, that's the other thing, that's the other thing, branding, like, you know, turf, part of the beauty of the turf is the branding, it's not just the branding at the end zones, it's the branding of the advertisement and those potentials, but, yeah, if we don't know, if we don't know what to brand it...
I think I'd be comfortable calling it the Flyers and stamping it in for thirty years, and that's what it is.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I think one point two for turf, that, that is, that's tough for me.
Just to give a gauge on that one, I was told by one of the experts that were onsite that it was, this was about ten years ago, that somebody had, had crunched all those numbers and figured out what the maintenance and the water bill and everything went into their facility, and it was eighty thousand for a full year. That was a significant amount of time, they guessed it'd be somewhere closer to around a hundred thousand for, that was for a college facility, and they dumped more water than what we would, or what the comparisons would be for that.
Yeah, because it is beyond...
Airing for the facility or not, but...
Twenty-year shelf life on turf, they tend to be saying...
Fifteen for sure.
So you're...
Fifteen.
Six hundred thousand over ten, sixty thousand dollars a year is what it would cost if you got the good, you know, twenty-year run on it.
Okay, so, uh...
I'm settled.
Who are we? Yeah, exactly, it sounds like we're all in a good spot. Okay, so, lots of, final thoughts from people, as far as it sounds like it's between Sayer and SPN. Thoughts on who we wanna move forward from the design phase for the stadium project? And I agree, like, all this conversation needs to happen when we're talking about costs, especially when you're talking about a percentage and given the increased costs of the turf, but again, as a reminder, this is simply for the design phase.
Right.
Yeah, that's an all bid anyways, the turf still, even if we choose one of these engineering architect firms, turf doesn't have to be part of the equation.
Yeah, I mean, and like they said too, you know, you just never know if somebody's going to come in and donate or, or, you know, potentially sponsor something like that too, so that's always...
Without turf, with turf, without softball, we still need a new track.
Right, right, right.
Absolutely, no, yeah, I agree.
But I think, I think if we're leaning, potentially leaving, leaving the turf out, then I would stick with Sayer, I think.
I stick, still stick with SPN if we're talking just to see a drawing, twelve thousand versus forty thousand is...
I'm still sticking with Sayer.
Katie?
I'm still kind of leaning towards SPN.
So again...
Come on, Cher.
All that talking is still your decision.
I'm just taking it all in. I think just to be fiscally responsible, I think I'm gonna go with SPN, and I liked that it was very transparent, flat fee, structure fee, and I did appreciate all the detail, and thought that they've already put in, but, I mean, either one would have been absolutely fabulous, but I think I'm gonna go towards SPN.
I don't think there was a bad decision to be made.
No, I don't think so either, we had really three very, very strong candidates. Okay, at that point then, I will require a motion to approve SPN homes as the selected RFP to perform the design phase for the stadium project, do I have a motion? Motion by Katie, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the school board will hold a discussion about capital outlay certificates.
Anything more than our presentation?
No, I would just think, just need to figure out what, what we're wanting, figuring how much it's gonna cost, and then determining whether capital outlay certificates are needed. I would say if it's gonna be anything over two million, or even one point five million, we would wanna look at capital outlay certificates.
Seems like then we're gonna be looking at capital outlay certificates.
Yeah, according to Jerry, at the earliest, we could pay off those certificates would be...
Five years.
Okay.
Potentially, I spoke with them at the summer superintendent conference, he was gonna look at an option that might have been, could be as early as four.
Though I do, whatever, if, I would say we wanna do five year, depending on how big the project is, five or ten years, most likely ten years, I would say recommend that we put one point five down, though.
I would like to be aggressive as possible and finance as little as possible.
I would agree.
When they did their demonstration, their presentation, and did it over twenty years, it was two million dollars in interest, I'm like, that's...
We don't wanna do that.
I'm not taking two million dollars away from the school because I want a nice football field.
I'd agree. So that's that. Do you recommend we move forward with approving the use of capital outlay certificates? Be as aggressive as we can with the down payment, and then, but just to give us the option to use those for the remainder of the funding project.
My plan is to probably take our money out of our CDs, so it's not tied up, but moving it to our SD fit account, it gets the same interest as our CDs, but it's at least readily available if we need to ever transfer it over, but we'll still, even if we put one point five down in a project, we'll probably still have a million dollars in our fund regardless.
Okay, good. You feel comfortable moving forward with that? Any other questions in regards to just the use of capital outlay certificates? There's no other questions, I'll require a motion to approve the use of capital outlay certificates to fund the completion of the stadium project, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion by Katie, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris.
Chris.
Chris, second by Chris, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Get to move forward to, the school board will hold a discussion about the addition of a meal charge policy.
So this comes federally, as I was doing our food service application, one of the questions was, do you have a food service meal charge policy? Well, no, we don't. So they provide just a recommended policy, and then you basically just tweak it to what your practice is as far as notifying parents on low balances, allowing seconds if they have a negative balance or zero balance, and then at what point are you providing an alternative meal if somebody has too big of a negative balance in their account? So practices, we send out weekly messages through Infinite Campus if their account is below twenty dollars. Once their account reaches negative twenty dollars, they're not allowed to charge extras or any à la carte options. This is elementary junior high, high school, this is press board. And then at, if their account, it remains negative thirty for five or more days, school days, that's when they'll receive an alternative meal. So they'll still get fed, they just get, Deb in the kitchen will make just a cold meat sandwich, put in a bag, the principals discreetly put it in the lockers for the kids to eat. So not embarrassing anything, but just keeping it consistent all throughout the building, so that way you don't get in trouble with discrimination or have to worry about any of that.
Okay. What is the overall reasoning for a different meal? Is it just...
Um, so they pay their bills, I mean, so...
Yeah, I know, but typically most people...
Making sure that they don't continue it accumulating.
I would say that I have never, we've never had a sex...
No, we really have never, no.
Because I just think, you know, if it's, if it's truly someone who just can't pay their bill, this could be the only hot meal their kid gets in a day.
Absolutely.
So it just feels kind of...
Anytime anybody is negative or reaches a zero or less, I'm sending out a free and reduced meal application. So there really is no reason for anyone who needs help.
Not be able to have access.
Yes.
We also have people who do...
Donations.
Funds and donations to put toward bills that we deem appropriate, and those would be, so even though that would be our procedure, we've never had to implement that procedure. So if that makes you feel any better, I don't know.
It just seems, yeah, just...
It looks reasonable. Any other questions, Scotts? If not, I'll require a motion to approve the addition of the meal charge policy, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the school board will hold a discussion about the reactive meal cleaning for our services.
So I got a quote on a cleaning company that I have been working with, they would be coming in five days a week, every night in our evenings, to clean every classroom and all our bathrooms and hallways throughout our building. They quoted us at fifty-three hundred dollars a month, which seems high, but over a course of, I mean, it might seem high to some people that look at it, but it is cheaper than a full-time custodian when you're talking about salaries and benefits, significantly cheaper. So, and to, we probably, if we could run to the event where we, in a year from now, we still don't have a full-time custodian, we probably wouldn't have them come so often in the summer times, so in the summer months, it would be cheaper than what's quoted here.
And we have the option to then adjust that as we...
And so I have a couple questions out to him, he hasn't got back to me, that was one of my questions, if we can adjust summertime. Another one was, this is a one-year term with forty-five days notice, I just wanna confirm that we just need to give a forty-five day notice in the event that we get a qualified individual that we could hire full-time. Still waiting to hear back on that, though.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so maybe we...
Angelique, the list of things that they are going to be doing, are they doing all of those things every single night, or is it just that's what they're doing, but they are...
So...
I'm just wondering, because I'm not sure that classrooms need to be vacuumed every single night, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you needed to...
It would be vacuuming every night.
But it would be, okay.
Dusting, cleaning the windows, like, the classroom windows, that would be weekly, along with kind of dusting out there up top of our trophy places weekly. Another thing, I had them look at the weight room, what that would look like, maybe a weekly, cleaning it and disinfecting it weekly.
Would this be enough of a help for our current staff?
I think so. Originally, we had them come in, and originally we... I think so. Originally, we had them come in, and originally, we just talked about bathrooms, but then as I was writing out all of Shannon's duties, I was like, okay, wait, no, bathrooms isn't enough. I think we need somebody in the, doing classrooms every night.
Like my quick scratch, it's like sixty-three thousand if we kept them at that rate all summer. And like, for the nine months of school, it's only forty-seven thousand, you're not hiring anybody for that.
No, not with salaries and benefits.
Salary and benefits, no, coming nowhere close to that. Had to run through every bathroom, vacuum everything. As long as it's a sufficient help to her. If it's not going to help her enough, then we're, no.
It's very needed, I don't, she won't be able to-
Yeah, I think she's going to be completely over, overwhelmed.
Do you know anybody that's used these services, like we have-
Yeah, so I got this company through Canostota. They were not able to find evening custodian, so they hired them. So this is actually, I got her name, this company through Jamie, the business manager there, and they have said positive things.
I'd say add a minimum.
They're very detail oriented. They've been in our building now three times, walking through, just making sure that they're going to provide us with the services that we need and and they're going to be coming in and doing carpet cleaning this weekend before school.
Is it their equipment they use then for the cleaning, or is it, are like vacuums and everything?
They come with their equipment, they'll use our chemicals. As far as vacuums, their rags, they'll use our washer and dryer to wash their rags. But equipment-wise, it's all theirs, just chemicals is ours.
It's a one-year contract?
So, on here, it says one year with written notice of forty-five days, but I, I want to check with him. I would like to just, the forty-five days written notice is what I would like.
I think we're currently in a position that with the staff, we have, we have to do this, to put this, her is unfair.
Right.
I agree.
Financially, I, I don't think it's bad at all.
So would we feel comfortable moving forward to approve the contract pending the clarifications that Angela has highlighted?
I would.
In reference to the forty-five days, et cetera?
That motion.
Any other questions, comments, Chris?
No, I'm fine with that. The pending stuff, I, I would want to make sure we get that clarified before we officially one-hundred percent sign, put our-
So would you feel comfortable, should we, I mean, it seems time-sensitive, so it seems maybe unreasonable to wait to approve it until next month's meeting? So does everybody feel comfortable going forward and just stating that we approve it based on those clarifications?
Or understanding of the contract?
Yeah. Sounds good.
If he comes back and says a six-month minimum?
Still okay with six months.
Yeah, I think we're-
You're looking at like thirty-four thousand, we're going to spend that more on drawings for a football field, so.
If we find some, you know, there's going to be a train-in period, so that would help to alleviate the pressures and Shannon a chance to teach them all the ins and outs.
Yeah, that's very true.
I think at this point, it's, it's absolutely necessary.
I agree. I don't think I'll have any issues with it, I just wanted to ask, in case. They seem like they're eager to come in here and help us and flexible.
All right, then I will require a motion to approve the contract for reactive commercial cleaning and janitorial services pending Angela's clarification on the few noted items. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
By Katie, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Cody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Curies. We'll require a motion to approve the elementary and junior senior high school handbooks.
We're linked on the agenda.
Katie included the elementary one here as well.
Comments by the principals, are the ones that set the handbooks for their sites?
No, I don't think so.
Any other questions or comments in regards to it, pretty straightforward to me? All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll require a motion to approve the elementary and junior senior high school handbooks. Do I have a motion? Motion by Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Curies. We'll require a motion to surplus the following library materials and technology equipment.
Two packets. Helpy list of items. Seth has done an awesome job of cleaning out some of the tech stuff in his classroom.
What is an old-time clock?
The ad swipers were the, the ways we replaced those a couple of years ago, and I have, I'm sitting on a time clock, not an old-
Maybe I needed punctuation or something in my brain. Like, what's an old-time, like a grandfather clock?
Old-timey.
A classic.
Time clock.
Yeah, sorry.
Like that t-shirt, let's, grandma.
Yes, I was, grandma saved lives, yep. Absolutely. Great, any questions?
Elementary kitchen, I will say, the elementary kitchen serving table, we're getting a new one for the elementary. The one we currently have now is just a three-well, where then they use crock pots.
Right, yeah.
Probably shouldn't be happening, but the one we ordered will now have four. And the one that's in there, there's rust on it, but I think there's still some use on it. I probably will end up putting it on Purple Wave for bids. Just to see if we can get some, some money on it, which I think we would, so. Just needs to be surplus first.
My stuff has to, I have to pay somebody to take it. I have a guy that will take whatever I want for nothing. But like the phone systems, I've seen four different districts trying to give away those same phones and nobody, you know. So most of my stuff's just going to be taken away by recycler, but if somebody sees stuff on there that they want, I'll have it in here this week.
And our high school books, along with our elementary books, will be available for families to grab at open house if they're interested in it.
What about those band white boots?
Yeah.
I mispronounced that.
Size, do you, where we could probably save you.
You got any, any, a twelve?
Any further discussion? If not, we'll require a motion to surplus those library materials and technology equipment. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by David, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, executive session, we'll require a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of self-qualified law one-eight-two-five-two, parentheses one. Do I have a motion? Motion by Katie, do you have a second? Second by Cody, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Curies. An executive session seven eighteen PM.
Katie hasn't used the same verbiage for-